Thank you so much. All the commissioners are here, I believe. Thank you for being here this morning and joining us for this work session. For public comment, we really didn't have anyone to sign up. We do have a rule about public comment. I want to just reiterate what it means. It's 10 minutes, you sign up 10 minutes before the work session. And if you don't sign up, we definitely, I don't make exceptions to the rule because that means I have to bend the rule for everyone else. So we're going to move on to presentations. We have Ameresco first. Ameresco is Mr. James Worthington, if you could please come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So for my presentation, Senior Project Manager for Ameresco, Jay Lockard, he's going to give you the update.
Quick item there. All right, well, everybody, well, thank you for coming. My name is Judson Lockard, and I'm the Senior PM with Ameresco. We're doing the energy project for all of Douglasville. Right now, based off our current construction, we are 95% complete with the job. The contract date is to be done in October, so I'm looking with everything to try to be done by the middle of next month. The one item hanging out there is I'm working with the IT department to pull in all the energy management systems. What that is, is those are the systems that control the heat and air for all the buildings where we installed it. So we hope to have that done here in the next three or four weeks. Outside of that, all invoices have been paid. Been a wonderful job with the county. Everybody's been great to work with, and that's with the speed of my project and my presentation.
Oh, wow, okay. Board commissioners, anyone have a question? Vice Chairman Robinson, I believe you have.
Yes, Director Worthington, come back to me, Mr. Frum.
Yes, sir.
Please give context on what this is, because everybody didn't follow. This is the conclusion of the initiative. This has been about a two, three-year initiative. Can you give context so they can see why this is coming to a close?
So this is an energy audit and savings program that the Ameresco did a long-term audit of all the county facilities and worked out a program to upgrade a lot of the infrastructure, including lighting, plumbing, some HVAC controls, irrigation. There's a lot of different measures that go into it. And to pay for that, the energy savings will offset the cost. So there's, it's a net zero for the county. It's a 15-year program. The savings is guaranteed by Ameresco. If the savings don't match, they'll fund the difference. So it's a guaranteed net zero for the county.
So, real quick, how many square feet, how many buildings, how much money?
This was, ended up being 20, 23 buildings? And I don't know that square footage between all of those. It would be probably in the 300,000 square feet range and the $2.5 million worth of work.
When we first started, we talked about a half million square feet from 33 buildings. So evidently, the scope had changed, I guess, once y'all got in there, and it did not include the jail. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So now, are they, last question, then, I'll yield to my colleagues. You've replaced all the heating and bathrooms and lights and so forth through the, throughout the county that was much needed. I mean, we know that, not by intentional negligence, but we just, as a county, didn't take care of that type of stuff, right? This administration, and again, this started in the prior one, but we did finish it. I want to give proper credit that we started down that path, because we knew how important it was that the county just really did not, doesn't focus on maintenance. Our roads, our buildings, it just, it was just a philosophy to just, it is what it is. But you have to invest. You have to take tax dollars, and you have to put it back in. It doesn't get better by default, no more different than your bodies, your minds, or anything else. You have to spend time. You have to maintain. And so this was an important project that was undertaken. I think it was a unanimous understanding, at least enough to get it down the path, at least a majority. But that being said, now you talked about this master control, and that's something I can't let go. So you're at the very end, and there's some type of control mechanism that's supposed to pull off them. It tells you what this building is, I mean, I guess it's a Lexus for all of our county buildings. You can tell heating and air for every building, and how to turn it on, turn it off. I mean, what's the problem? And what does that mean? He said that, I'm not.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One of the main things is the security, because we have to get a server into your IT department. And with that, we want to make sure that no one else can broach or break into that EMS system and get into any of your systems. So that's why we're working with your IT department to separate this from your whole IT system. This is going to be its own standalone system. The server's here, and what the server does is, we have at each of the buildings, there's a small controller computer, they have a laptop, that has all the graphics on it, it controls everything to certain times of day, temperatures, and with outside air sensors, it'll tell how hot it is outside, what the temperature needs to be outside, controlled dampers, air coming into the building. And then when you're not there after 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock in the evening, it'll go to an unoccupied. So you're not air conditioning or heating all your, I mean, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, like you would do, you know, I do it at my home. So this is kind of to keep that from happening, because nobody's in the building. So the server takes all the data that's there, because we get, we're guaranteeing this to you guys. And it pulls it back into the server, so we can, we're going to assist you guys as part of the project to monitor this, to make sure that, in fact, what we told you we were going to give you, we have hard documentation for that. I don't, we, you know, nobody, I can say I promise it, but I want to be able to show you minute by minute, 365 days a year, that this data is in fact doing what we told you it would.
All right, I'm going to finish with Director Hall. Let's make sure we double back, and I want to measure our bills based on what we signed, or we'll take it offline in committee. And last thing, Commissioner Mitchell, if you may, can you make sure you talk about this IT thing? I sort of need your insight on that, what he just talked about, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much, Vice Chairman Robinson. Commissioner Mitchell.
Okay. Something in my eye.
Yeah, you want to.
I got you, okay.
I got a couple of questions, though.
Yes, sir.
Also, was not included, was the family waters pool and all that other stuff, correct?
It was, honestly, it was, but there.
It was or was not?
It was, it was.
Pulled out?
Yes, that hasn't been pulled out for the reason that you guys recently put in a new energy management system. So the funding for that is being, we're working on a change order to allocate those funds to other energy savings projects, because EMS system you have in is exactly what we would have put in, right? So we're going to be working with you guys shortly to gain access to it, so we can make sure that the temperatures and everything that you guys are utilizing match our savings, and then the funds that were allocated to that, 100% of that, is going to go to other energy savings projects. So when we did the audit for this job, we looked at every single building, and we looked at tons of different energy management systems, or I want to, we call them EMS, that's lighting, water, controls, irrigation. And so that money is still yours, but the new system in would be, I guess, would be a bad idea for me to pull your new system out and put one in exactly like you already have.
But the chlorine system was removed from the project, but there were other things added.
Correct.
That's what I was saying. Answer your question, yes.
Yeah, so the chlorine system, yeah, we don't, we're not controlling the chlorine, we weren't going to control the chlorine system.
Right. So those funds were pulled out?
Yes.
Okay. And renegotiated, but okay, but you're speaking of something else, but I'll be right back. Thank you for.
Okay, I apologize, I misunderstood.
It's okay, it's okay. I thought that was change, though, but okay, good. So you're doing everything else outside of the pool for family water when it comes to parks, right?
Yes.
You talked about, is this an annual savings of this whole makeup of roughly $2 million, or that's the overall?
So, yes. It's going to be measured annually. And the annual guarantee was, I don't remember the exact number, but it's between 100 and, it's around 175,000 a year. So they're guaranteeing we'll save 175,000 a year, roughly. And then that money will pay for these upgrades that we've kind of financed out. So it'll, it'll be a net zero over a 15-year period.
Okay, that was my other question. So it's a 15-year makeup. Okay, so the 2 million is not, that's an overall number, that's not dropped up? Because I was going to say, I didn't think it was a $2 million savings annually, but, correct.
Over the life of the project.
I got you, I got you. I got you, but when I, when I first heard it, I was like, okay, that would be really nice if this is true, but I want to make sure that we say the same thing.
Well, I can add that after that 15-year mark and everything's paid, we'll continue those savings, and that'll just be a bonus to the county.
Got it, got it.
So as long as the infrastructure holds up for the last 10 extra years, that could be potentially $2 million more dollars.
Got it, got it. Okay, all right. Okay, and I guess eventually we'll get the building, the whole makeup, you know, some kind of spreadsheet of some sort, that we can kind of see this, I don't know, quarterly, annually, however it looks as, as we go through this entire process.
Every year, we provide an annual report, a savings analysis, with the backup documentation I was speaking about with the EMS system. And then at the end of this project, I give them a line by line, which is, I said I was going to change out 5,000 lights, and I actually changed out 7,000. I always end up changing out more. And we'll recalculate it, and you'll be able to see those, the lighting and the water, the savings of what you're supposed to get for like a kilowatt or a KWH, you'll be able to see that, or gallons per minute, you'll be able to see that here shortly, when I finalize the final documentation to give to you guys. Then after that, yearly, we're going to give you a report, a savings report.
Got it.
Yes, sir.
And at least, if the number's correct, 100 plus annually is a, is a golden.
Correct.
And, you know, if not, if the savings is not there, then you'll, you know, supply the difference.
Yeah, we guarantee it, so we're pretty good with our calculations. I've been for 20, 20-plus years, so, you know, like I said, we guarantee it, based off what I'm seeing at this moment, you should, you will definitely get that, not a question.
Could that number ever be greater than?
Yes.
So what happens with the greater than?
Yours.
It's us, okay.
Yours. We don't, we don't do shared savings. Like some other companies do shared savings where we do, you know, if you're $10,000 over, we get five, you get five, but now we don't do that. It's just, it's your additional savings.
Got it.
So if you control it differently, you can gain more savings. So, but.
Okay. And that will be an annual makeup, though? It won't be the quarterly makeup? It'll be an annual? So every year is what the number will look at to see the savings are not correct at the end of the year, or is it?
So we will check it annually, and the guarantee is done annually.
Got it.
The savings will be, they're ongoing. We're saving already, because they've already changed so much.
Understood. So, but I was, I was concerned, not concerned, but when I questioned, though, is going to the annually at that 123 of whatever that number you?
It's about 175.
Okay, 175. So that number is what I was alluding to. Annually, we'll look at that number, because throughout the month, there may be some ups and downs.
Exactly.
Right, correct. And when we end up, is what that, that 175 number, whether we end up with 200 or 125, somebody will pay the difference.
Correct.
Or we'll keep the better spread.
And that's our goal.
Yeah.
The second one.
Got it.
If you guys keep the additional.
Okay, okay, all right. You go, Ben.
Okay, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Guyer.
Thank you. What about when some new technology comes out, and it would be better than what we've implemented now? How is that going to work?
That, honestly, that, that does happen, that we have, over the years, have gone back to past clients and, you know, re-audited if they've requested it, and showed them additional savings. You know, technology change, let's just go with the light bulb. It went from 32 to 28, from 28 to 15, 15 to 10, now it's down to eight. So, and it happens over the past 10 years. You know, so some of these clients have did their projects, or it was 28 watts, but that was the technology that wasn't any better than that at that point. And so we've gone back to those clients, because they've asked us to say, hey, is there something else we can do here to gain more savings? Because we're already seeing the savings annually, year over year, is there another way we can save more money? So that was, yeah.
Well, more and more companies and buildings, especially homes and stuff like that, but also big warehouses and things are going to solar.
Yes, ma'am.
Energy. Was that ever discussed for any of our buildings?
It was, that was looked at in the initial phase, and when they were figuring out how much we could spend and what kind of savings we had. At this point, solar is just getting to where it's almost in that 15-year payout. It was not cost effective for us to do it now.
But it's, it's come.
It will definitely be something.
More and more solar farms are being?
Yes, it is.
We will definitely revisit that in years to come. And there's, there's more and more different kind of opportunities that are coming up where people, you know, companies supply, kind of lease the power to you, they put it on your property, or you can buy from them. So there's a lot of different options that are out there, and those prices are coming down and down and down, but they're just now.
That we even talked about putting a solar farm out at the old landfill.
And we have investigated several of those opportunities in the last few years. I'll say, five years ago, the cost was very much cost effective, it was not worth considering for us. The last one we looked at still wasn't a good deal for the county, but it was getting really close to where the next one, or the next one may be that breaking point that it's what we need, you know, so.
Okay, and where, where did you find the biggest savings, or waste on our part?
Well, I wouldn't say it's a waste of anything, you know. I'd go throughout the country and do this, and so, I mean, the one thing, we always call it the lowest hanging fruit is lighting, just because you're going from, each light is 32, each bulb is 32 watts or 28 watts, and now we're down to 10 watts. And now just, you know, the bulb costs, because the technology has gone down greatly. So that, like we said, it's low hanging fruit, so that's where you'll see the biggest bang for your buck.
But all of the air conditioning systems are scheduled, they're on a schedule where after hours, they turn it up or down.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, you know, that, that, that's, that is an, I mean, that is one of the major energy savers, is to turn your air conditioner off, you know, or heaters or whatever, set it back, and use outside air instead of 100% cooling or 100%, just mixing the air a little bit more. That, that'll help, definitely. So I wouldn't say that that was a waste, that was just.
On the lighting, each bulb is saving somewhere, 10, 20 watts, which sounds fairly insignificant, but when you do it over 10,000 bulbs, that, that are running year round.
But this wasn't just to change light bulbs.
Correct.
It was much bigger equipment and the air, I would say, the air conditioning, that you could get, and stuff like that. Maybe motion detector lights and things like that.
Yes, ma'am. We did, we did, you know, sensors in some of the locations, you know, changed out toilets and mechanical equipment that was more efficient than the energy management system, new irrigation controllers, so.
All right. You go, Ben.
Okay.
Let me go with Commissioner Carver. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Worthington, the new portion of the security areas that we just did in the courthouse, was this incorporation in Ameresco?
Yes, although there's still a little bit of work that's going to have to be finished up in there.
Yeah.
But it is part of it.
Yeah. I'm going to work with Mark Teal, I mean, not, I'm sorry, Mark Price, wrong, I apologize. I'm sorry. Mark Price on getting access to some of the, some of the locations, you know, with court dates and, you know, mates moving in and out. There were just a few lights left in this building to do, and then, yeah.
And my other question is the, the security part, the being able to access it. We have that ability, right? So, so let's just say we need it to access this on a Sunday afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
We would have the ability.
So for this building, and it's not fully set up yet on the interface, I believe we're still going to have Mark Price handling this building as far as the controls, like it's been being, and then the reminder that outside buildings will go through property management, so it'll be myself, you know, Woody. We can probably set up to have Mark Teal have control or something, if we can, be reached or something, but we'll have, we'll be able to.
So there's a fallback, is it?
Right.
Okay.
And there is, there will actually be some manual override things if, if we have issues or whatever, so it will be, it'll be good.
Okay. And my other question is, so if there is a drill, there's some type of, you know, emergency, what, what happens in regards to, like, does your system shut everything down? Do we have power? Do we have the ability to override everything that they put in place?
Well, so we could do that, but only on the energy management. We don't, we won't have a universal control for lighting, you know, we're not, we won't have a, one master sweeps to control all the lighting. Trying to think of a scenario that we could do that with, but.
Master breaker.
Okay. All right.
That is shut.
Yeah.
Okay.
The master breaker.
Killed the power.
They only have a building killed 100%. And then we start it back up, then EMS system, take a couple minutes to get it to reboot.
Right.
So, yeah, maybe it'll be, yeah.
All right. That was it. Are you there?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you so much, Commissioner Carver. Commissioner Mitchell, you had one.
Yes, yes. Okay. With the server that you spoke of, not that, but the server, and trying to secure it, and making sure that we are secure, what kind of sort of that plan, I mean, you just never know what the hackers and kind of what their thought process is, who's going to try to get what the control and or deal with our power? Have we been working closely with, with Russ on that?
Yes.
What it looks like and what that would entail?
That, that'll have its own firewall built around it. So it's almost a standalone system from yours. So we're disconnecting it from your main system, so that these two can't, they're not tied together.
Got it.
We're using the feeds, but we're not using, not tied to your server.
Right.
Yeah, so that's, that's how that's going to work.
Okay, so it'll have a firewall handle, whatever, anywhere.
Russ has been involved, and he will, he will be totally satisfied when we're done.
Got it. And to piggyback off of Commissioner Guyer's question about the change of technology, the change of bulbs you mentioned, the change of how things and that whole savings come along, who, who will incur that cost if by chance the bulb went from a 28 to a 21?
Right.
You know, whatever the numbers are, that creates even bigger savings for the county for you to come back and now change 3,000 bulbs again. Who, who incurs that cost to create a bigger savings? Is it the county and the change, or we change the bulb? Or is it you guys go back and recommend the bulbs, and we change what you guys go back? Who, who does all that? I'm just, want to understand how that works.
To the comment, all above. I mean, you know, so, I mean, we can do a whole other audit, you know, I mean, we're pretty far from being able to do that right now with technology.
For costs.
Yeah, for costs, exactly. Yeah, so right now, I mean, we're guaranteeing the system off of what it is for X amount of time, and we're not anticipating coming back to upset. I don't think it's, I don't know how else to say it. I mean, we may, we may look at solar, but to change the light bulb.
But you'll let us know that there's a new bulb out?
Yes, sir.
That somehow was created that only used 10, whatever.
Yes, sir.
You know, and if you guys would like that to do another, re-establishment of savings, then we'll put these in at whatever the cost.
Yeah, so we call ourselves a green energy partner also. So when my guys come through and do the measurement and verification, and they look at everything, which is part of the annual report, we'll also look at other items throughout the buildings and say, hey, if you do this, that would help, you know, if you unplug these unit heaters underneath everybody's desk, that would help, and, you know, then have seven refrigerators in this room and only one's working, I mean, one had water in it, that would help, you know, we'll give options. I'm not saying that's the case right now. I'm just giving examples from other locations, so those are, and we would, we would provide that in our report.
In your report, but when would it cost us, the county, at what point?
So it, it won't cost us anything in the future unless we choose something. So, for example, like the last technology was for us and contact for us, and then when LED came on, we made the choice, let's move to this as an energy savings. If there's another technology that comes along that is better than LED, and we decide to do that, we'll have to renegotiate things at that point. There are always, always be the option that we can do it in-house, as long as we're improving our savings that will impact this contract.
Okay.
I'm not aware of anything earth shattering, it's, we're to the point now, so like most of these bulbs are 10 watts, so the most will be able to save 10 watts, then you're down to using no energy at all. So it's different from the old, you know, we're using 100 watt bulbs, and then we use the 60 and 10, and so there were some big gaps. We're getting so close down to the bottom now, things are really getting efficient, but.
Okay.
We're kind of losing the edge as far as what our options would be.
But based on technology, tomorrow, it could be that.
Could be.
That 300.
That works.
Okay, all right. I, I.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Vice Chairman Robinson.
Yeah, I'll make, wrap up comments. So again, go back to initially, you're looking at the county, be strategic in your commentary. We had what, half million square feet worth of buildings, over 33 buildings. The jail is what, half million square feet?
Correct.
We did not look at the jail. Is that correct? The jail is how old? It came online in 13, this is 19, what, six years? Six years old? Yeah, about six years old. At, at what point do we, and I've got to be, tomorrow, the sheriff talked about jail and other monitoring topics, at what point do we, is the jail ready to have a conversation? Was it already LED? You know, I just don't remember.
So when we started this process, this has been in the works for a few years now. So the jail would have only been three years old. It's LEED certified, which is, when it was built, that was kind of your highest standards for energy efficiency already.
Yep.
Doesn't mean there's not some room for improvement, some way to change something to improve, but it, it means those margins are going to be slim compared to the rest of the county, where some of the buildings are 50 years old, and, you know, there's a lot of opportunity. What we had discussed previously with the administration of the company was, we can revisit this as a separate program, really whenever we want, if we want to look into it. And I think kind of the last deal, internal discussions where we'll get through this, see how everything goes, and then we can move right into looking at that as a separate program if we want to proceed with it.
I won't belabor it, I know this was good, and I want to keep my chair, it's agenda on point. I just wanted to highlight that, again, the 33 buildings that we looked at, for context, was a half million square feet. The top buildings in this county, half million square feet total, 33 buildings. The jail is a half million square feet by itself. And the magnitude of that is just like, well, if there are any savings, if we got this type of savings with 33 buildings, and you got equivalent in the jail, I just want to know, at what point can we perhaps get some savings out of that big building? But you sound like, not quite yet, not quite yet. And it's okay, you don't have to force that, but I'm always going to keep up with that. Just put that to the side. The last thing is, is that just you guys' comments on solar, we did talk about that. We have talked about the landfill. It did come up in our conversations with Ameresco early on, but we said, keep the scope tight. Do this first, do the audit, deliver this, and then you have a conversation. So I don't want to discount, you guys are accurate, it was talked about, but that was not part of this scope, just so it didn't get away from us, Madam Chair. And so this was strictly, go in there, do what you're supposed to do, deliver us the savings, and then perhaps, if you do good, we could have that conversation. So, I don't, I didn't, you know, there, there may be opportunity with solar, but that wasn't the scope of this project. Are you?
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate the flexibility of the system. Thank you so much, James Worthington, for being able to have some access to thermostat for our seniors, particularly for their dance. We got a call that there was a boxing dance and he were just, and I would appreciate you being able to cool them off. And also just had one last question. We have a couple of buildings coming online very soon, which is our multipurpose center and the senior center and our firehouse. Are there plans in the future to incorporate those buildings as well?
So, they were not included under the current contract. We will be looking at least as a consideration to see about tying those in under the control system. It's still too early to say whether that'll work or what the cost will be or if it'll benefit us, but it will be considered.
But thank you so much for your presentation and thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. We'll move on to the next item. I'm just gonna switch things up just a little bit. I want to introduce our new senior services director, but before I introduce her, wanted to certainly extend and commend, uh, um, Mr. Richard Hayden for his many years of services here in Douglas County for senior services. And would just if we could, just give him an applause. Now, I would like to bring forth his replacement, and her name is Dr. Cincella Gilchrist. Uh, could you please come forward and introduce yourself and just say a few words to the board commissioners and also to our directors and also to our citizens here in Douglas County?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I am excited to be here and to be part, a part of the Douglas County family. I thank you all so much for your kindness and generosity and for accepting me, um, after so many years with Richard. I know I have some big shoes to fill, but I am up for the challenge and ready to go. But please answer your phones when I call you and need some, um, help and some assistance. And we're looking forward to, um, seeing what we can do to further help the seniors of Douglas County. That's a, a passion and a love of, of mine, and I am just super, super excited. So, again, thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to our first business item. Thank you so much, Dr. Gilchrist. Uh, we'll move on to tab number four, uh, business item. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Approval of the Minutes. Our board of commissioners, please read the minutes for tomorrow and be prepared to approve accordingly. Uh, next, we'll move to the first business item, tab number four, resolution to approve Project Southern Charms, participation in Douglas County tax savings incentive plan and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. We have our executive, uh, authority, uh, authority, Mr. Chris Pomfrey.
Good morning, everyone. How are you all this morning?
Doing great.
Good, glad to be here before you this morning. Uh, as the agenda states, uh, we are here, um, from the development authority who unanimously passed at a special call meeting, uh, last week, Monday, for Project Southern Charm, to be on the Douglas County Tax Incentives Plan. You all should have received, uh, the resolution, um, last week and also received the project profile that kind of outlines, um, everything about the project. And as much as we, as much as we have on hand about the company as well. Uh, the basics, you know, of the project is this is an e-commerce, uh, operation where Prologis, which is the largest industrial developer in the world, who's developed a number of buildings here in Douglas County, is currently developing a nine hundred and twenty-five, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred square foot, um, industrial building on Factory Shoals Road. Um, and that building is not quite complete, which is a good thing for them, that they've been able to, uh, secure a tenant for the entire space, um, and that tenant is Project Southern Charm. So, uh, this, this, uh, the, the building, as I mentioned, will be, uh, completed later on this year. Uh, we have been working with Project Southern Charm and the team at Prologis and the Georgia Department of Economic Development over the last several months. Um, also have been working with county staff, fire marshal, development services, um, as well, over the last, uh, several weeks about the project. Uh, the company would create nine hundred and eighty-one jobs, uh, over a five-year span, so nearly a thousand new jobs, uh, into the area. Um, the average wage of fifteen eighty-two, remember the word here? Um, is the, uh, yeah, fifteen eighty-two is the average wage. Um, and the, the tax incentive plan would be on the real property, and that would be the building that Prologis is developing today. Um, any personal property or inventory, um, in the building would all be taxable assets, uh, for the project. We also have, uh, Mr. David Sisco, who's here, uh, with the company as well, who could further exonerate anything that he would like, that he can share about the company and be able to answer any questions about the business operation for you all as well.
Please come forward, what is your name again?
David Sisco.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and just tell us a little bit about this wonderful project.
Yeah, uh, so, we are, like Chris said, an online retail company. Um, we have been growing double-digit revenue growth, um, ever since we started. And this, our third quarter had just ended. We grew revenue, uh, nearly thirty percent, and we grew our active client base seventeen percent. So, still seeing a lot of growth and upward trajectory on our end. That being said, we haven't actually opened a new warehouse facility anywhere in the U.S. since two thousand and sixteen, so. Um, I'm a, I'm a network strategy manager for the company. So, we were really looking at starting to grow our footprint in the U.S. and get ready for our growth down the road. And when we had evaluated that, we, we worked with our data science partners to look at key areas geographically where we, we didn't have a strong presence in terms of our distribution today. And so, working with them, we, um, locked in on the southeast and then did a lot more, uh, exploration into what city should it be, what labor market, and, um, worked with the folks in Douglas County to get a better understanding of the talent that you guys have up here.
Okay. Thank you for choosing Douglas County, and we're humbled, that's a lot of jobs. Appreciate you.
Yeah, we're excited to be here.
Any questions from the board? Vice Chair, Chairman Robertson has a question for you.
Yeah, thank you. And Chris be on standby as well. So, um, Factory Shoals, you said Factory Shoals, what'd you say, Chris?
Factory Shoals.
Factory Shoals, all right, just the two, all right. Nine hundred and eighty-one jobs, um, I heard your average wage. How many of those would be management, right? I'm always curious as to, you know, how much opportunities there for, as you say, the local talent, perhaps participate in the upside of, you know, a, a good career. Are you able to share that, just a, a general, what percentage? You don't have to reveal anything secret or anything.
Yeah, rough percentage, I can follow up, oh, you have a number section.
You got to put your spot.
We, we have that information.
It, it helps.
Twelve, one fifty? Yeah, about one, one fifty of the thousand.
Okay. A managerial, non?
Yeah, I'd be, um, like GM for the building, but also, uh, manager and supervisor roles, which are salary positions.
All right, so you got a structure in there, so it's, it's not necessarily flat. You have hierarchy in which people can grow, that, that, that's always important. Uh, thank you for that, Chris. So, this fits our investment policy? Do we need to make any changes to it, or does it hit dead on?
No, sir. We, um, based on the two thousand and thirteen tax incentive, um, plan ordinance that was passed.
Yes.
Um, this fits right within that plan, we made no, no changes to it.
Very good, okay. The second question is, 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 I, I heard you say you work with the state economic development. Is the state involved as far as the plan? You don't have, if you don't know, that's okay, I'm just, I'm comfortable where we are, I'm just asking.
Sure, sure. So, um, I would say all, all the parties to the project, we've worked with the Georgia Department of Economic Development and their statewide team, um, Georgia Power and their statewide team, economic development team, um, the Metro Atlanta Chamber, uh, as well, has been a part of the project. And we've worked with the real estate, uh, community, JLL representing, um, Project Southern Charm. And then I think JLL is on both sides, also representing the, uh, the building as well.
Okay. You, you?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Biker?
Yes, uh, Chris, you were talking to me before the meeting, and you were talking about our governor Kemp, and then we're giving, um, some kind of credit, tax credit to the company.
Yes, so, so we've got, um, the, the state has its, its statutory incentives that they offer. And so, um, the, all of Georgia is working out into a tier system. Douglas County is a tier-three community, so from a job tax credit standpoint, per, at a minimum of fifteen jobs that are created, a company is eligible for a seventeen hundred and fifty-dollar state corporate income tax. Um, that tax credit goes towards fifty percent of the company's, um, income tax liability. And so, Project Southern Charm will receive, uh, the credits for that, which are roughly eight point five million of state job tax credits, um, over a five-year period. Um, starting, my memory's starting to fade on the state programs. And then, uh, the state, uh, sales and use taxes exemption, which is roughly a hundred and forty thousand. There also, um, as the state is committing a discretionary grant, uh, to the project as well. And that is, basically, you have your statutory incentives and those are the things that you can read in the brochure. And then kind of when it comes down to a competitive situation between, um, a finalist site in Georgia and a finalist site in another state, then, um, the, the state can layer on what they call the discretionary grant. And so, they did, um, offer a discretionary grant for the project as well. And that, that grant could be used for its retrofit, acquisition of equipment, all various things.
Uh, thank you for that. And Mr. Sisco, uh, is this your first distribution center here in the states?
In the U.S.?
Uh-huh.
No, this will be our sixth.
Sixth?
Yeah.
And how long have y'all been doing this?
The, the company was.
How old is the company, I guess?
Yeah, the company was founded in two thousand and eleven.
All right.
And then, like I says, we have, um, we've got five.
By one, I think.
We have five distribution centers today, but we haven't opened up any one in three years. So, we've had those five, um, to basically set us up for the first five, first five years of the company and then set us up long-term to continue to grow. And we've realized that, uh, it's a good problem to have, that we've been outpacing our own growth expectations, and so, we're just trying to set ourselves up for the next few years.
And Chris, you told me, you explained to me that the reason they're exempt for the first five years is because of the point system that we have in place with all of our tax abatements. And for so many employees and so many square feet and so much, uh, investment and stuff like that, it boils down to where they can qualify for the first five years as, um, tax exempt on the building, not the personal property. All the equipment, I mean, yeah. And so, uh, they would, uh, uh, and then after that, they would be taxable on, uh, per rad share. So, okay, I, I, I give up, thank you.
Welcome to Douglas County.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe Attorney Bernard has a comment, a question?
I'm getting signals, and I'm thinking I'm reading between the lines. David Corbin did a presentation to y'all, and I just want y'all, this is the, the draft of this is the same as the old draft abatements. It has no incorporated changes from Mr. Corbin. And he's not reviewed it, but I just wanted y'all to know, it's the same as we used to do.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, just, just a couple. So, um, this, these nine hundred jobs, when are we gonna put the word out that these nine hundred jobs are available to the general public? And what's that skill set? Do they need to be some high-tech engineer? Or can they just be able to breathe in the fog of a mirror?
Hopefully somewhere in the middle. So, the, the nature of the work at the associate level is, is mainly pick, pack, and ship. We don't have a ton of racking in our warehouses, we don't operate forklifts. And so, um, to get your foot in the door, it truly is like an entry-level role where you don't need a lot of background experience. In terms of job postings, we, we've already begun posting internally, um, on our website. And then I think we're actually working with Breezy and the team here to continue with next steps of recruiting efforts, uh, campuses and career fairs and things like that.
Yeah, so, so, Chris, we, I know you and I had a conversation earlier about, did we ever send the link page, whatever it is that, that stated that there's a job fair or, or?
Not, not yet. Um, we don't, we don't have a fair just yet. And I think as of, even as of Wednesday or Friday, we're still going back and forth on the details of what's on, so it's not quite written yet.
Oh, okay, but that's forthcoming.
Yeah, but I, but I don't, we haven't set up a job fair.
Okay.
But more or less just kind of how the positions will be posted, where they would be posted, and just make you sure.
Well, that's where I'm looking, I think, we are, fair would be great, but at least so we, we could share that information out with anybody else that these jobs are available, more so than anything. And, and I'm assuming he's fully aware that, you know, hiring Douglas billions, there's a potential credit that, uh, could be also offset, things correct or?
Yeah, so, and, and what you're referring to is basically, if thirty percent of the employment base are Douglas County residents, an additional year can be added on to the plan at the final year's rate. Um, and I think it's forty percent in additional two years, um, on, at the final year's rate of the plan.
So, but, but I'm just, I'm assuming.
Yeah, and that's all in our agreements.
Okay, okay, okay. And, and I guess last but not least, um, Ken. I was having a senior moment. So, so you had a chance to kind of, it's all over it. And, and I guess what you said earlier, that, uh, the program is the program we had back in twenty thirteen, fourteen, I guess, so.
Well, the word, the words on this, uh, abatement agreement are identical, are almost identical, they're not exactly identical, but of the old form abatement that y'all used to do. It does not include acceleration, which is part of the program, Chris. Any accelerators are part of that, I guess, we should have guessed.
Accelerators.
Yeah, any kind of acceleration of, of down year ranges, but the, this is what we used to do all the time. The callback is only the current year if there is a discrepancy on April. There's a process for audit each April, and it's the same deal, and then you get back on track. If it's transferred, as long as the transferee receives, uh, commits the same program, they can pick it up where it is. If it ever gets off, there's a rendered period provision, but it's, it's the old draft.
Got it.
That makes sense.
And I think this department will be somewhere in this whole midst of monitoring kind of who's watching, uh, the house. Or, and that's not a question for you, Ken, I'm just, kind of who's gonna monitor this to make sure that everybody's on the same page, everybody's moving in the right direction. If there's an in-and-out timeframe, here's what it is and, and here's the outcome. Cause I, I think there's a committee design, am I correct?
It is.
Okay, I know somebody. Okay, so, so we, we do have that in play, so we can at least, you know, assure that everybody's doing all the right things. Oh, okay, okay, so that is, that's okay. Um, and last but not least, what's the target start date, tomorrow, or is it?
For associates?
Associates, for the, for everything, to, to get you guys going in the direction of hiring, um, uh, the, the whole makeup, I don't know, that whole plan, when, when you guys kind of hopefully be up in, that, hopefully, you can tell me within that first year, you're gonna hire the, the nine hundred people, but I'm, I'm reaching, uh, uh, I'm trying to be far on that, but.
So, our, um, our target date to have the building fully operational is Monday, October seventh. So, with that, we are probably gonna have our first wave of employees starting about four to six weeks prior to that, so end of August. Uh, but that really depends on working with Prologis and the team on when we can actually access the building. Cause like Chris had mentioned, it's, it's, uh, the shell is complete, there's still some retrofit that we're doing for, for our specs. Yeah, and then by, by the end of this year, we're looking to have, for, for that launch in October, we're looking to have sixty to eighty associates on day one. And then by the end of the year, we think it'll be about a hundred and fifty, um, just by the end of the calendar year. So, within the first ninety days.
Very impressive. Okay, okay, all right, okay. And, and I was gonna ask kind of what is it that you guys will be doing, but I, I'll, I'll leave that up to the experts. I, I yield that.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Carthian?
Chris, can you talk about the agreement? Um, just kind of piggybacking off of what Commissioner Mitchell said about the agreement, so that everybody's reporting. So, this time we have, um, three contracts, is that right?
Yeah, so it's a three-party agreement, um, where you've got Prologis being the building owner, uh, Project Southern Charm being basically the end user, the creator of the jobs, and, um, and the county. And basically, that, that three-party agreement basically states that the, the, the county is allowing for Project Southern Charm and Prologis, I guess, Prologis to go on the property tax incentive plan per the job creation of Project Southern Charm. Um, and on an annual basis, there will have to be a recording to the fact that the investment has been made, which will be made in the first year because it's on the building. Um, that the investment will be made, but that'll be an annual reporting requirement, and that the jobs that are outlined, um, are, have been committed to. Um, there is an, an eighty percent threshold on the jobs, and so, you know, it basically says that, you know, we use easy math, it's a thousand jobs, you know? It gives you a twenty percent kind of cushion, um, on that, um, on that job creation versus just a hard stop. So, like, if they end up at nine seventy-nine instead of nine eighty-one, you know? You know, so it, it leaves a cushion there, and, and we have that in place. Our first plan was a one hundred percent requirement, which is pretty honest. I mean, like I said, if someone commits to create nine eighty-one and they only create nine eighty, well, that's not a hundred percent. Um, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it was done in bad faith. Um, and so, um, what, so what is a part of the ordinance allows for the eighty percent threshold when there's a state discretionary grant that's been, um, involved, which we do have on this project. Um, the city of Douglas County actually does eighty percent regardless, regardless of whether it's a state grant or not, um, on the plans. It would probably be a good idea for us to do the same thing, um, but, but. to do the same thing, um, but, but the agreement is between those three. Through, through our office on the front end, we're making communications about, um, you know, just giving a heads-up that your reporting is gonna be due April first. Um, and then we do, and then we do that in fall, then we do another reminder with specifics about their particular program. Um, in January, this basically is in on April first, you have to report on this, this is what you said you were gonna do, we're expecting to see that on April first. And then, and then that's kind of where the process begins of making sure that the, the projects are on track.
And Mr. Cisco, what's the high end? You, you gave us the average, but on the high end, what is the salary?
Um, the high, I'd have to pull that up exactly. I, I don't wanna mislead you, but we have, like, our G M, as an example, would probably be the highest, but that would just be for one position. Yeah, we're, we're working with our comp team on our side to get exact numbers, and we'll know that in the coming weeks, but don't have that. Yeah, uh, uh, yeah, probably one fifty to one sixty range, I would think, but I don't have the final number yet. And just to give you guys a sense of our confidence interval in our N two, we have, one of our distribution facilities in Pennsylvania is five hundred thousand square feet, and that building has over seven hundred employees right now. So, this being nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, we feel really confident about being able to hit that nine eighty-one.
That's good to know. Okay, thank you. Honorable commissioners, thank you all so much, Mr. Cisco. Thank you so much, and thank you so much, our Executive Director, Chris Pompert. We appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for answering all the questions, Morris. Alright, we're gonna move on to tab number five. Tab number five is resolution authorizing the coroner's office to operate under all previously established laws, rules, regulations, and procedures adopted by any Douglas County Board of Commissioners pursuant to any, um, applicable laws, uh, coroner, and they got, got women's here? To present, if you could, coroner, if you could go through the podiums, and, um, I believe you have a resolution here that you want us to take a look at regarding your certification, correct?
Correct.
Good morning. Good morning. Go forward.
The, uh, resolution is in reference to, uh, the cor- I'm sorry, the Board of Commissioners have given us their blessing to receive our national accreditation and to recognize us through Georgia Peace Officer standard. Uh, the accreditation is nationally accredited, and it holds us at, as, at a higher standard as it relates to policy procedures and record-keeping. And it also allows us to get grants for the department.
Okay. Are you finished? Okay, any questions from the board or comments, uh, for coroner? Commissioner Carthon?
So, when you say it's a national standard, Georgia Peace Officer Standards and Training Council allows you to get grants for the coroner's office?
Yes.
Grants such as?
Equipment, vehicles, anything that we need in the office. Um, we can get vans, new vans, fully equipped, and body bags, all of that.
Okay, and so that would help you to offset some of your budget increases that you, okay, by allowing you to get this training, which you guys have already completed?
Yes.
Okay. That's good to know. Thank you for being proactive. I yield back.
Okay. Coroner, also, I realize that accreditation process is very rigorous, particularly being in the hospital setting, joint commissioning, all of those accreditation processes, so I know you have quite a few boxes to check to get to this point. A little bit, if you could just elaborate, I believe you will, will we be the only, um, coroner's office in the state, or talk about your, how, what this would position us to be?
Yes, we will be the only coroner office in the state of Georgia to receive national accreditation, and it just holds us as a higher, holds, holds us at, at a higher level than the coroner office, sets us above the rest.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Geiger?
Uh, why does the Douglas County Board of Commissioners have to do this? Because, uh, you're an elected official. You, you state that you're not under, that you're your own boss, so, um, why do we have to get involved in it?
It's just a blessing from the, uh, Board of Commissioners saying that they agree with us as far as us getting, trying to obtain our national accreditation.
Is this stating that you're doing your job as the rules and the laws require you to be? But you're under a court order right now from a judge from this county saying you're not doing your job in, in one aspect of it. And then, uh, there's an opinion into the nineteen ninety-seven that you're not, can, you cannot be a peace officer, so I don't understand where the word peace officer is coming in.
That's, that's Georgia post, that only allows us to be identified under public safety in the entity of Douglas County. We are listed under pu- public safety, if you would look at the back of your calendar, but it recognizes us as being in that entity. It's not saying that we are peace officers.
Legal to look at this, because there's a, I have the Attorney General's opinion, it's an unofficial opinion, but it, it is an official, uh, it is from the, um, uh, Attorney General's Office, but it's, uh, because it's stating that you cannot be a deputy or commissioned under, uh, a peace officer if you serve as coroner. So I would like for that to be looked at, but, um, and I, I have a concern in the fact that you're under a court order from a judge, Superior Court Judge, right now stating you're, you have, you're not doing your job properly, and I don't understand why we have to get involved in this.
You aren't tied to your opinion?
Yes.
This, this resolution, I'm, I'll jump in, it, it's, it's, I, I consider it harmless if, if it helps the coroner operate their office. It's not, we can't convey policing powers to anybody, and so it doesn't do that. I will say that part of the coroner's investigative training is actually administered by post. Post actually trains coroners that has training facilities in the state of Georgia for coroners. But what I read this is just simply saying, the coroner is saying, I'm applying for grants and recognition, national certification, and I'm agreeing that whatever rules have been established, we're, we're gonna follow them. It, it doesn't convey any new right or privilege or anything else as I read it, so I don't think, I think it's, uh, harmless. I will say, though, that, believe it or not, the post-training, that, there, there are folks involved in state training of coroner, believe it or not, so, but this doesn't convey policing powers, this resolution, at all.
Well, the paragraph I had trouble with was, uh, whereas the Board of Commissioners and the coroner desire to establish clearly that the current coroner is authorized to offer, I mean, operate under all laws, rules, regulations, and procedures previously established by any Board of Commissioners. What does that mean?
Listen. It is a very broad statement to get certification, it doesn't mean anything, if you don't know the truth.
It's a resolution.
Because candidly, the coroner's office, you know, this is, uh, an interesting dialogue. She's elected. State law really impacts her job more than anything y'all do, but I think their internal pro- uh, processes, like personnel, like, uh, management, those kind of things, that she's saying, I agree to comply with y'all's requirements. So I don't see, I, I don't, I don't see it as anything. I think we're probably overthinking this. I read this as just, uh, uh, get out of, uh, get certification resolution. I don't see it as anything else. Cause there is no home, I will, I, I, let me go back, so we'll walk through this. State law, state law establishes the coroner's office in the elected capacity. State law establishes, for the most part, the rules and regulations of what coroners do or don't do. There is local legislation that affects pay that we've gone through before that was adopted by the legislature, but even under home rule, you wouldn't overcome, for the most part, any rule that would affect state law, uh, and her performance of her job, other than I think she's agreeing, as a matter of comedy, to work with y'all on anything that y'all have established, she's gonna comply with. That's how I read that.
Well, there is a state law that says that the coroner shall do the work, uh, and the deputy cannot do the work when the coroner's there, that she's, uh, they are responsible. And we're getting billed by a deputy when the coroner's there, so I have a problem with that.
That's not what's on-
That's a state law, though.
Yeah.
That's a state law.
That's not what's on this resolution, that, that discussion.
It's all rules and laws and regulations and procedures, so, um, I don't feel that the procedure is being followed by state law, so, I yield back.
Thank you. Alright, this, okay, this keep the personal, we, we won't just leave the question.
They seem personal.
Yeah, good. Uh, th- thank you, now, coroner, for being here. I, I personally appreciate, uh, what you do. Uh, you haven't heard me say this personally, but, you know, like all our first responders, people who have to go out there, while we sleep at night, don't care who goes out, one o'clock, two o'clock in the morning, have to deal with the, the backside of, of humanity and, and cleanup stuff and establish stuff for the record. Um, and I'm not gonna, um, take it lightly, but you have to carry, um, by way of, um, just you, and all first responders and stuff that we, we get convenient, like I, I said this before, like, you know, we watch Dateline, we think we got it, but, no, I thank you for what you do. Uh, I appreciate your courage and all that you do. Now, let me get on to the business at hand. I'm, I'm careful with my commentary, because to Ken's point, this is harmless, this is what the Board of Commissioners desires to do, to get behind the corner like any other office. This is not a big deal. I personally, um, as relates to corridors and all of that, I mean, I, I disagree. Right? I, I have just as much power as a probate judge to make a, an opinion. Uh, other people have come in here, established about work. This is not a H R matter about, I, I think this is the wrong forum for that commentary. This is about a resolution. This is just like us going to A C C G and leveraging their purchasing power. It's like us going to NACO this week at a national level as commissioners to get certified, to do better, to acknowledge that, okay, I'm trying to come in compliance, I'm, I'm becoming more efficient. Now, now, if I took a position against everybody who may make a mistake, or miss something, I'd take out half of them, right? Meaning, it, it's an over-criticalness, like, okay, really? Really? And I, I asked it, really? And I, I wanna balance this, it, it's, to your point now, Sharon, I wanna, there's a line, and I, I don't wanna believe at this moment of, of the ask is appropriate, um, a resolution of, of support that, look, I'm trying to go to a higher level. We're trying to make this better. This office really had no real standard, and I'm working my way through it, just like the commission. We, we're raising the standard here. Don't make us talk about the policies and stuff, get we-best. Uh, I mean, you really don't wanna have that, and I'm, it's not personal, I'm just, I'm saying, you, Ken mentioned earlier, we, and I said to myself, well, it's not really we, we, we don't have an issue, meaning me, uh, with this resolution, but I, I get the general commentary. Um, let, let's, let's just focus on what's being asked. Uh, I, I think it's, to the attorney's point, well, you can do it or not do it, but I, I support this. Somebody wants to take a position against it, that's fine, you know, you press no. Uh, but it's nothing that, that will belabor it going to the agenda tomorrow to, 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 to go forward. Uh, I appreciate you, uh, bringing this forward and acknowledging in front of the public that, look, we're trying to make the operation better, we're getting certified, we're sensitive to those things, um, something that has never been done before. Um, I appreciate you trying to raise the standard, and I'm gonna yield back.
Thank you. You know, Commissioner Mitchell, if you have something, you can go move on.
Yes, I do have something. You got it. Good job, first of all. Second of all, um, help me understand, um, what you, what you did to get to this point, and what this would, once you got to this point with your staff and your team, kind of where are you going with this?
Well, we started from nothing. No records, no nothing, no office equipment, no vehicles, so we had to start from scratch. And now we have our policies and procedures in order. We have vehicles now, we have uniforms, we have staff, we have office equipment, and we have all of our needed supplies.
And procedures?
Yes.
Okay.
And in order to start your process for the accreditation, you have to have policies and procedures. So we had to start there first. And now that we have them, we will, we are ready to start our assessment phase, which will start on July twenty-ninth. And, um, once we get that done, the assessors will come out, look at our policy and procedure, our record-keeping, and they will make the decision to award us the accreditation. And then, once we get the award, it will be presented by the governor.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I think I heard, you and I shared a couple things. This is, you'll be the first gift in when this happens, if it does-
In the state of Georgia.
In the state of Georgia.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's gotta be huge, uh, to, to be, you know, the only one setting the standard and setting the pace. And, and how many hours is this? Is this hours that you and your team put together, or this is hours that you went to, like, A C C G and get all these hours? Is it, is it all about you and your hours, or is it about the team?
Team.
Okay.
It was a te- it's a team effort, and it takes a lot, lot of hours of research for this process.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so you're asking here for us is our blessing and or support?
Yes.
Not that you, I don't wanna get into whether or not you need this or not, but you're asking for our blessing and support of where you're going and where you're taking, uh, your team as the coroner's, uh, and deputy coroner's and others, and what direction you're going with this particular department, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, I mean, I, I, I don't, I don't see it as a, as a concern or issue. I'm, I'm glad and proud of you and where you're kind of taking this position and taking the lead and moving in the right direction and going with this whole makeup. Uh, I think it's important that you, and we've had this conversation about providing for the citizens of Douglas County in the utmost and the, the best these standards, and if this what it's gonna take to kind of assure that you are making sure and that we are doing for our citizens of Douglas County, giving them the best, then why wouldn't you support this? And I'm not asking for a question, it's not a question, why wouldn't you support something like this? So, I, I commend you and give you kudos on, on doing this and continuing to, to grow, uh, this coroner's office, and, you know, I just, it, it's a good thing, so continue that, and I, I, I'm like Vice Chair, I, I, I'm not gonna get into, you know, pointing fingers at anything. I wanna know kind of where we're going and how we're gonna make it better. And if this is something that would all lead to that, I think, why not? So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Job over there. I yield back.
Okay, thank you so much. And coroner, thank you so much for coming today, and, yeah, this will be on the agenda tomorrow, and I made it very clear when I took office, there is no room for second place, and I appreciate you doing this. This is important to me, and also for every citizen in this county, to be recognized and accredited, uh, for what you do, and, and for your office and things, because, you know, I said again, from sunrise to sunset, we will take care of our citizens, so thank you, okay? Have a good day.
I would like to say, uh, one thing, uh, Commissioner Geiger, I invite you to my office to spend a day with me to see what I do, and, uh, my doors is always open to you.
And I would like to say, I've seen reports from your office where you said you did twelve investigations, but we were billed for eight by your definition.
I invite you to my office.
I will come.
Stay, I would, I want you to stay a whole day with me, so you can see what's at the operation, not something you were told.
Okay, thank you, and what we'll do, um, Commissioner, should I say, Coroner Gottlieb, I came by your office the other day, and again, still, still, like I've seen it before, and I do personally invite all the commissioners to take a peek like me. I've come out of the ivory tower, I walk the walk and talk the talk, and I was up there to look at records and things of that sort, because I'm- because I'm, I'm always checking, uh, I don't just trust, I, I verify as well. So thank you so much, and we look forward to this being on the agenda tomorrow. We're gonna move on to tab number six, Authorization to amend the Animal Services Budget for donations received to be used for spay and neuter from the Fourth Annual Spay and Neuter Fundraiser in the amount of eighteen thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars. Our Director, Mac Miller.
Well, I'm just excited to say that our Fourth Annual Spay and Neuter Fundraiser, uh, which was started by Mike Bolker and is co-hosted by the Humane Society and the Animal Services, was a great success this year, and the Humane Society has presented us with a check for eighteen thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars to be used for spay and neuter, uh, in our in-house surgical suite at the Animal Services Building, and I hope you will consider to amend the budget so we can go forward with those spays and neuters. This should help us greatly, um, help our reach our goal of spaying and neutering adopted animals from the animal shelter.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next one, tab number seven, Authorization to Implement the Animal Service Court Diversion Program in an effort to educate citizens about responsible pet ownership. Director Mac Miller.
One of our biggest goals this year is to step up our education of the public, um, by educating them about spay and neuter and the laws ordinances of Douglas County for combining their pets, uh, general pet care welfare concerns. We do occasionally have to take people to court, um, and we feel instead of having them go to court, missing a day of work, and not getting the educational need, we could offer them a court diversion program. We would charge them a fifty-five dollar fee, they could take a class, which would be on a Saturday, which would allow this citizen not have to miss work or go to court and miss out on a day, 'cause miss out on a day's pay, minimum fine per charge is a hundred dollars plus court costs and surcharges. And this education would be on a Saturday. The fees would go back in towards our educational fund to help educate the community, and, um, hopefully this would solve the problem of whatever we took them to court for, um, you know, leash laws and if their animals were not getting vaccinated, not being spayed and neutered when they do adopt from the shelter, which some, if they're too young, we have to go under contract. Uh, so there are contracts on some of the animals to get spayed and neuter, but we feel like this class would help with education with the public, and it's what we stepped up to do, uh, this year.
Okay, any questions from the board? All right, we'll move on to the next item, tab, tab number eight, Authorization to Approve an Agreement Between the Clerk of Superior Court and Rapid Financial Solutions to Pay Jurors with a Debit Card Instead of a Check. Thank you so much, and, uh, Director Mac Miller, thank you.
You're welcome. How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Tammy Howard.
Um, thank y'all so much for this opportunity to come before you to present an agreement, uh, which I've got the agreement to miss Lisa, between my office and Rapid Financial Solutions, we wanna start paying our jurors with a debit card instead of a check. The reason is I'm having a lot of fraud on my jury account. I had three checks last week, just last week after I presented to the Finance Committee where they signed my name. Um, the check looks just like ours, it just has an extra number on it. But on the three checks last week, the signature wasn't anything like my signature. The two checks last year were big checks, and they looked identical to my signature. Luckily, we caught them in time, because we had positive pay on our accounts, so we caught them in time, but if we hadn't, we'd have been out of money. This happens all the time, on, on just the jury account. I have ten or eleven accounts, and it just happens on my jury account. Uh, another thing that's happened over the last few years is now you can take a che- a picture of the check and, and get money that way. Well, jurors do that, and they just throw the check in a drawer, and six months later, it's not a check, and they go, and they cash it again. So, um, I've been lucky to write kinda little ugly letters to them, uh, people, and they come and pay the money back to the county. So, um, I, those two, I were able, and we were able to find those two people. But, um, it's just, it's happening a lot on these accounts. So, there's several counties that's using this company, it's, um, it's court funds or Rapid Financial's the name of the company. But what happens is in McFadden County, Pawnee County, Love Island, there's several other counties, and I went and watched them do it, and, and so I did all my research. When the jury comes in, you have a jury summons that has a barcode on it. We scan that barcode in, we will then scan, this will be a, uh, they'll have a barcode in here, we will scan the card and give it to that juror. So it's tied to that juror and nobody else. There's no money on it until we put the money on it through our computer system. So, um, it's very safe, I ran it by legal, Jennifer, she looked at the contract, we changed it, the, um, to fit us, and they, they changed everything. I went before the Finance Committee, so they're aware of it, and they seem to like everything on it. So I'm just wanting to change to that. And the number one is what's the cost? The cost of this little card is forty-nine cents, which is what cost me to mail a check. So, we will wash out on the, on the cost. And we're very excited to start it just because of the fraud. It's gonna help us cut down on the fraud, um, help, a lot of people call us, they've lost their check, so it will help us with that. And also, um, they'll have instant access to their funds, as soon as we load the money, they can go use their card. Um, we don't have, once we give them the card, I don't have to deal with them anymore. If they lose it, if it's not right, if it's not working, anything like that, they have to contact them, they're available. Uh, their customer service will take care of all of that. So, and if, if we don't like it, I can stop it after thirty days, that's in the contract. But I feel like it will be a benefit to us, we will have instant bank reconciliation, because we put fifteen thousand dollars in and we, they take fifteen thousand dollars out. Unclear checks is a big problem for me, um, in the jury account. I have thousands of dollars, and we have to wait, have to wait five years, and so we're constantly trying to clear off that account. So this will cut all of that out. So, we're real excited, and we hope that you agree and that we get the agreement signed. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the, uh, issue?
My, my, my first question is, you said it's Rapid Financial Solutions?
Yes.
So, did you do any research on any other companies besides Rapid?
I did not, because I don't know if there's any other company that's doing this, actually.
Because I always like to try to be competitive, see, you know, who else is out there, what, what their pricing is, what their structure is, um, so...
I can do that.
I, I would like for you to.
Okay.
I would, just in fairness and curiosity.
Okay.
The, the second...
They come to our clerk meetings.
I bet they do.
And then, and there's no other company that comes with it.
I bet, I bet. You go with who you see, and I, and I understand that.
Right.
Um, and the, um, but I, I applaud you for doing that.
Thank you.
I, I think I have a check that I've never cashed from you, so I'm probably one of those that you, yeah, I know I have.
I gotta wait on you five years.
It's the past five years, yeah. The, um, the other thing that I, I, I wanted to ask you is, in dealing with, um, the, the company, I didn't get a chance to see the agreement, um, Ken or Jennifer, 'cause it's not attached, so I wasn't able to, to read any verbiage or to see.
I probably didn't attach it, I had given it to, um, for Madam Chair to look at.
We can track it down in the circle.
Yeah.
I, I'm a reader, so I like to...
Okay, okay.
I would like to see it. But good job, thank you for paying attention. Yeah, being a forward thinker and getting us into the twenty-first century.
That's right, that's right. So they can't help do us, our neighboring counties.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Guyder.
Yes, thank you. Tammy, uh, how do they use cards? Do they use like a debit card for any store?
Yes, gas, anything, groceries.
You just zip it through and then?
And if they wanna pay a bill with it, they can register the card online and, you know, there's all different ways with the brochure.
But they can deposit it into their check?
I think they can.
Oh, they can?
I think they can. Uh, but it's all on the little brochures that we'll hand them when we scan the card, all of that information is there.
Now, uh, when I was tax commissioner, after five years, we hadn't turned that, any unclaimed funds over to the State of Georgia.
We did too.
So your money may be at the State of Georgia.
Yeah, we have to do that too, but we have to hold it for five years.
We don't like to do that. It's a shame that we can't keep that ourselves, and then if anybody comes for it after five years, then we can just make it good. Uh, we need to change that law.
And that's a lot of work, because you gotta research and...
Well, yeah, you have to trace, track them down.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do you have any questions?
Yeah. Hello, Matt, how are you?
Fine.
No, it's good to see you, I don't get to see you that much.
I lay low.
You know, but, but you, you play a, a very, very important role, um, in overseeing this county very, it's all about efficiencies, all about records, it's, your, your team is unsung heroes and heralds and all of that, and respectfully, and I, I know what you do down there, and I just like, do y'all get the volume? Do y'all understand that everything about government is records? And so, I appreciate that. So, to that point, and you just keeping up with it, you make it look easy, like, I got it. My, 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 my question is, I would like the administration on our side to provide a little bit more support and help her through this process, right? While she can, in her, you know, constitutionality, make choices per se, I think we could have provided a little bit more, like, well, we could walk you through that process and figure out the right, um, vendor, whatever the case may be. So, I guess my question is, there's at least a, a question of, um, is this the right provider? Uh, I don't know if it's a single source or not, uh, but how, how fast do you have to move? And I, I'm not opposed to pausing, but also I'm not opposed to making the decision, uh, per se. I'm just curious, because again, I, I mean, you, you, you got an operation to run, and, 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 and really that's all you do, and we as the general government are supply, are supposed to provide a share of services across everybody who wants it. I know sometimes people want their own little victims, but I appreciate where we can provide value, we can. So, I mean, it's an honest question, but it's not put you on the spot, I mean, do you need more time? I mean, what, what is your intent? What do you need this to go live for?
I didn't have a particular date, I was hoping we could start by, you know, September, 'cause it'll take the vendor a little bit to get our banking information and stuff, but, um,
September?
We can, I can research some more companies that, I'll just, probably take some frustrating years.
I, I, I'm just, I'm filling it out to my peers to say there may be some time, uh, but not too much, but I'm, I'm not saying pause tomorrow, Madam Chair, it was just more of a, I, I hear, you know, is there, to your point, you have plenty of vendors that approach everybody from transportation, you know, probably fire, I T, everybody else, we, we understand how it works, so it's not a bad thing, uh, we're providing cover for you, we're for you, so. Your call, Madam Chair.
I guess I worry about the, um, the fraud on the account just last week, three checks.
Yeah, you're trying to move it.
One was fifteen hundred dollars, so that's a lot. That's a big first time.
Okay, then, we, Madam Carth, I understand what you're trying to do by way of overall policy and purchasing for the county. Uh, perhaps you go offline, and if you get a little bit more comfortable, let us, you know, by tomorrow, and you need more time, or you see, I mean, follow your lead. I yield, Madam Chair.
Okay. And I just have one, one other question. So, we give the, we put the money into an account, into an account, and we give Rapid Financial the ability to pull the money from the account to the county. Do they also have the ability to go back into the, the account? Like, to put money back into the account if they, or, or to... Let, let's just say...
Probably not.
Probably not.
We get the money from, uh, Terry Davidson upstairs in finance, she bars the money into our account, so I don't have any money in that account until they, we tell Jennifer every, I'm not Jennifer, I'm looking at that Jennifer, not Jennifer. When I say I have two hundred jurors, and I need fifteen thousand dollars, and then I let them know, we give, we used to give them the check numbers, and they would put exactly the checks that we wrote and put down in our account. Now I will run a report from Rapid, and it will tell me whoever was a juror, if you were a juror, that you got seventy dollars put on that card. So we can run a report, and we will be able to tent verify, all of these were jurors, we gave these jurors this amount of money, and so they will, they will still put the money in there, and then Rapid will pull it out.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the security, the back and forth from coming in and out of the accounts.
And nobody can get this brochure, if somebody in my office grab one, it's not gonna work, because it has to be tied, and I, Sabrina, I asked Sabrina to come up, uh, from finance to see how we worked on Monday morning with jurors, and it has to be tied to that juror.
Okay.
So it, and we, because we're gonna be paying them through the jury program and with a bar number, so they'll be, they'll be matched.
Got you. And I see if the client, if the juror doesn't spend it within a hundred and twenty days, and they start, they start taxing them on their card.
So we will tell them as soon as we do that.
Okay, got you.
You better spend your money first.
Exactly, exactly, they start getting charged for it. All right, I yield back.
But I will check, I will check, I will do that exactly.
Okay. If, if, if we can hold off for, until the next committee?
That's fine.
Okay.
We'll have a lot to research, and then we'll go.
Madam Chair, let me just point this out, Tammy could have entered this contract without us, 'cause she's a constitutional officer, but she likes working with the county, and to the extent that she wants to do that, that's great, but I just wanted to point that out.
So you can enter this without us, so we just wanted to make that clear.
You know, y'all know me, I'm a team player.
So you wanna wait until the next?
I can, and I don't wanna.
Okay, and then?
I waited two years. I tried it two years ago. I didn't come this far.
And you can do your diligence to make sure that you're complete with your decision, okay?
I'm absolutely fine.
But other than that, you know it's your decision.
Yes.
Okay. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I, you know, and I appreciate that, I was just leaning over to Madam Chair, telling her that, to, to, we, we acknowledge the fact that she's a constitutional, and that's why I made my comment earlier, um, that, you know, when I was getting like, oh, just add up the volume and see how much does it call, fall within the fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand, so anyway, it's, it's, we, we just, we're trying to get better. Right? Something that's never been done, and I, I was being sensitive, Commissioner Carth, you know, reforming our, our purchasing and some of our policies and stuff, so we're working through ours, um, by all means, we recognize who you are, but I, we weren't trying to over-administer either, be an overburden, and respectfully, you, it sounds like you've talked to all the finance, y'all are working day to day, this was just sort of a mechanism, like, okay, this is not that, but still, thank you for your patience, we, we got you. We, we know what you do, and that's my whole point, share services, she shouldn't have to go through this, we should have, like, done, been on this, so that's my point, Madam Chair, so we're good. I'm on it, I got you.
Okay, you're welcome.
We're good.
Thank you. And this is off the agenda, but I know, I wanted to mention, I can't leave without mentioning Ms. Hazel Burton. Uh, everybody knows Ms. Burton is my office manager, and her husband passed away Friday. So I just wanted everyone to know that, um, keep her in your thoughts and prayers, and the visitation is gonna be Friday, uh, from four to six at New Mountain Top Baptist Church, and the funeral's gonna be Saturday at one at the church, at New Mountain Top Baptist. So y'all just keep her in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, Security, Court, uh, Highway. All right, we'll move to tab number nine, Authorization to Approve an Agreement with the Douglas County School System to Find and Ask an Additional Dare Officer for the Elementary Schools to Address Drug Awareness to Be Funded by the Douglas County School System and Authorize the Chairman to Sign All Related Documents. Major Holmes?
We, uh, the dare program used to be in the school system of the county, it's been about, probably two thousand and six, since it was gone, had gone away, and we went to another program called BLAS, which is a life skills program. Recently, we had some changes and promotions at the Sheriff's Office, uh, where a lady named Susan Swift promoted to a lieutenant. She's actually a nationally known dare instructor, and the dare program has always been, been there. All of our life skills people will be going to teaching dare, they're going to a training this summer, and we are going, the school starts back, back to the dare program. I think that is an excellent move, uh, by, by us to do that. Um, but in, in the agreements with that, the school system agreed to add one additional person and pay for them to be a dare, additional dare officer, so we're actually adding one, the ones we have now that are BLAS, I believe there's four of them, will be trained in there, so they'll be a total, I think, a five.
Any questions from the board? Move to the next one, tab number ten, Authorization to Renew the Contract for Administrative Solutions for the Administrative Inmate Medical Claims and Inmate Reinsurance for the period of July first, twenty nineteen, through July thirtieth, I'm sorry, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final, uh, legal review. Major Holmes?
Uh, this is the contract with Janie Floyd with Administrative Solutions that we have at the Dell, dealing with inmates that are taken away from the building and, and hospital stays, doctor visits, things of that nature. She's the one that does all the billing and makes sure of things, uh, taken care of at the proper rate. This year's contract is, uh, the daily, per inmate, daily amount is still the same as it was last year, forty-one cents per inmate, but the daily count of inmates is actually down from last year's contract, that's why it's a little bit less than last year's contract.
Any questions from the board? Okay, move on to the next one, Tab number eleven, Authorization to Accept a Check in an Amount of four thousand nine hundred dollars and five cents from the Douglas County Sheriff's Office by order of the Douglas County Superior Court as abandoned property. Major Holmes, again.
This is the latest, we do this pretty often throughout the year, obviously, so y'all noticed, I've done a couple of them recently, but, uh, this is another abandoned property order we got through Superior Court, and the auction went down on June tenth, and here is the check that I'm gonna present with finance a little bit of that amount.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'll move on to the next one, tab number... Tab number twelve. Authorization, and we have a correction on number twelve, Commissioner, says authorization to approve a contract with Edwin Ford as senior civilian chaplain with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office with a salary not to exceed, your paper, your documents say thirty-five thousand, but it's not to exceed forty thousand annually, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents pending legal review. Major Holmes.
Ma'am Chair, I'm going to take this up for Bobby, since I spoke to the sheriff, and I do want to point out Bobby's new grandfather this weekend, so he's probably tired.
Congratulations.
So, I know he's excited. I spoke to the sheriff about this particular agreement. The sheriff wanted to be not to exceed forty as a vendor, and no benefits, it's just a straight, I guess, subcontract agreement for him to provide ministerial services. The sheriff will not supervise the actual ministerial acts that Reverend Ford will administer, but Reverend Ford is agreeing to comply with their security protocols and regulations over there. I will tell you, it's a close call from a legal perspective about how it's being triggered, vendor or non-vendor, but the sheriff's going to do this, and so I have drawn it up, and that's what we're doing. He, too, comes to y'all, as he can enter this agreement without y'all, but I think as a commodity to y'all, he's asked to put it on the agenda, but I spoke to Sheriff Pounds myself, and this is what he wants, and I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware of that, and it is forty, not thirty-five.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board, Vice Chairman?
Yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, again, we all get into the constitutional officers, and it's sort of like on a national level, like, you never want to invite me, that there's not a checking balance. We are legislators at the local level, we're looking at those people who are executing, providing the public service in such a way that needs some degree of visibility. I'm real careful, and I keep hearing that, well, they can do what they want, and you can, but we appreciate the atmosphere that's created, that allows us to just, just check it. Nobody's trying to be corrupt, corroded, crooked, anything like that, so this ensures that we all have a little insight, a little confidence in our government. You know, when people start getting in their own world, in their own islands, and their own, they want to secede, you know, secede from society, be in their, you know, it's like, well, that's sort of dangerous. I don't know what you're doing over there, but the fact that you give courtesy to let us know and let us in on sort of what's going on, it makes the system work. We're not trying to over throttle and run them, no way. We're just trying to make it sufficient as we do this, so I appreciate that. Again, we're just talking about a chaplain, but at least we have some degree of visibility to our county attorney's court. We have some degree, like, who's really over there, and what's really happening and stuff, because again, it's the shadow government that gets, gets, this is to the public. I know firsthand, it's, you need this, right? I'm behind the veil. I actually can see what happens and how things flow, and so, trust me, you will always want, have visibility. You always want, never accept, they don't have to be transparent, never accept that. That, that's important. So, I get power, but it must always yield to the people and their right to know, and just to watch us go through a process that keeps things at least reasonably clean and that we can see going on. So, I commend the atmosphere that Douglas County is doing, to keep the point that we have historically always allowed this, but I never want to get away from that, and I want to emphasize the point that, no, guys, this is good, let's not ever get away where we start creating people in their minds that, well, I don't have to come before, like, to the public. You don't ever want to do that. If you see anybody who wants to take that position, you need to remind them of how this process works, executive, legislators, co-branches, working together. Ayo.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
One thing for, that's been pointed out, the, on tab twelve, we need to replace the words with a salary not to exceed thirty-five, it needs to be for a professional fee of forty thousand annually. I'll give one Lisa, make sure that's correct, but I guess, he's not technically a salary employee.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. All right, thank you, Vice Chairman Robinson, also, thank you for coming in. Thank you so much. Major Holmes, I'm going to move on to the next item. The next item is tab number thirteen. Authorization to approve Task Board of twenty nineteen dash six with Atlanta Coast Consulting in an amount of ten thousand dollars for the purpose of procurement evaluation support for privatization, solid waste services, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Jenkins.
Thank you, and see you in the morning.
Good morning. Hey there.
Okay, we're back again, we're still grinding on our ability to make a decision on what we're going to do with our landfill, transfer station, whole situation, it's quite a undertaking, has been for the last two or three years, but it's not impossible. I think I told y'all last time I was here, a lot of changes going on in the waste business. Advanced disposal, we had a contract with Cobb, got bought out by Waste Management. Waste Industries, that's right over there on Bankhead, got bought out by a recycling company out of Canada, and I'm certainly not a lifetime solid waste person, but I've never seen it like this, moving around, and so, here we are. What we was trying to do, it started off with the finance committee that said, you know, we'd like to look into this and see what's out there, see if there's any interest in it. We had four proposers, two of them being international companies, and two of them being US companies, so it's pretty big time, a lot of money out there. When it happens, there's a lot of opportunity for somebody to say, how do you get a fair deal? So, this ten thousand dollars is for ACC to hire an independent consultant that will oversee the evaluation process as well as, we already got two letters out there, I can tell you how many questions we had for them, but the ten thousand dollars covers us from the transparency standpoint, on through helping us come up with the companies that we think would be a good fit for us. However, I'll say it again, that might need to wait this deal out a little bit, that things settle down some in the industry. Not required, I'm just saying, it's pretty, it's pretty like the Wild West out there, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board or comments, Vice Chairman Robinson?
Sure. Greetings. We did speak recently regarding the landfill. I, obviously, after the board committee, I was trying to stay close to what's really happening, so those interim conversations. So, we've got a landfill privatization, yes, the industry is consolidating, recalibrating, but that's any industry, it's very big, it's very seasoned, thin margins, but it's massive, and it's just, it's an Asian beast. This ten thousand dollars is just, appears to be just a consulting agreement to come in here and help us, what, reframe our next step? Is that really what the goal is?
You're asking me to?
Actually, it's to evaluate the existing proposals we have.
That's right.
Okay, so, so, as opposed to us doing, that's, as opposed to us evaluating internally, we believe we need somebody more seasoned to take a look and facilitate this process, is that correct?
I think, I was looking at it more from transparency standpoint. I didn't want somebody to come back and say, well, y'all gave the contract to this guy for thirty-nine dollars a ton, I would have done it for twenty-nine dollars a ton.
No, I, now, this is important, because again, you know, this is the enterprise fund, it's a standalone, but it's massive, right?
That's right.
Policy-wise, purchasing internally, we have a lot of major contracts that are warranted offline, maybe not through committee, it's back to consistency. Now, I appreciate what you just said, it's like being transparent, I want some help, I only want to touch this, to your point, the comment I just made, like, y'all know how this money moves around this county, but I appreciate what you just said, well, I want to be transparent. I know this is going to be a lot of stake with this, and we're talking about privatizing a moderate-sized county. I mean, listen what he just said, like, no, I hear you, and I'm emphasizing this so the public can hear it, and I appreciate, and this is probably a very appropriate move. I know people always ask, well, why we got to spend money on consultants? Like, okay, no, sometimes you want to just keep it clean, get it right, and so, I just wanted to highlight that, it wasn't, you know I'm not putting you on the spot, because we talked about this, but I, I appreciate on this one, there's a lot of stake with this, you're talking about privatizing a landfill, you want to get this one right, so I just wanted to make that emphasis, ma'am chair, and I support the moment.
Any other comments from the board? All right, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Director Jenkins. I'm going to move on to tab number fourteen. Authorization to accept the Family Connections Grant, amount of award in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the period of July first, twenty nineteen, through June twentieth, twenty twenty, and authorization of a contract with Douglas Court, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents and amend the budget. Jennifer King.
Yes, ma'am, this is the grant from Family Connections that goes to our core group. The contract has been worked on, and everything's ready for the grant money to go straight to Douglas Court.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Well, we tabled this, right? So, this is a previous, I just want to highlight, this is a previous business that we're bringing for, right? Old business? I just want to make sure.
No, technically, no. We tabled it in a board meeting, we just took it off the agenda.
All right, but we did discuss in public, we talked, okay, all right, we talked about it, we took no formal action, it just never made a, okay, I think, no, that was, all right. You're comfortable, everything's lined up?
Yes, everything is lined up perfectly.
Everything's lined up. I'm going to let it go.
We hurt the wheels.
Go, go, peace, peace, wassup? We're good, we're good.
Okay, well, I'm going to move on to the next tab. The next tab, I was hoping, tab number fifteen. Authorization to accept the grant from the Criminal Justice Corning Council for the Juvenile Justice Exited Grant, an amount of two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, with no required matching funds for the grant for school year beginning July first, twenty nineteen, through June thirty, twenty twenty, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents and amend the budget as necessary. Jennifer King.
Yes, ma'am, this is also a grant that we receive yearly, we've gotten, I think, for about six years. This funds some of our youth programming through the court system.
Okay, any questions from the board? Pretty self-explanatory. Thank you, sir. A nice one. Just skipping a little bit, far, go to sixteen. Okay.
Previous question?
Yes.
Before you skip, all right, back up real quick to the prior one. No, no, I just want to make sure, just broadly, who will get the grant, is it going through, what's the entity? I'm not trying to lead it somewhere, but what will be the entity that this gets passed through to?
I'm sorry, which?
The previous question, the previous number, I'm talking about, Family Connection.
That will be going to Douglas Court.
Douglas Court.
Organization, yes, not to a person, but to Douglas Court.
All right, Douglas Court, and the execution of that service, or that, the execution of that is inherent within that agreement between, or tied to that grant, is that accurate?
Yes, it is, yes. Any services will be invoiced back.
Will be invoiced back, and the reporting, and this, my director, it's more just a reporting, it goes across, is it salary support, just one more time, salary, or just any operational part of that, right?
The grant allows them to spend it on whatever they want to spend it. So, the invoices come to us to process, and that's the only.
Us is you, or us is?
The county.
Okay. Director Holman. Okay, I can catch you from there. I'm good. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Thank you. I'm going to move to seventeen, and then we'll come back to sixteen. Tab number seventeen is authorization to accept a check from the Douglas County Library in an amount of a hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-nine cents for the care of courtroom mondo pad. Director Holman.
Yes, ma'am, the, according to Judge Emerson, the law library bought a number of mondo pads for the courtrooms, one of the computers died, and the vendor in focus will charge a hundred and seventy-five dollars to fix it, and they require payment by credit card. So, the funds are actually coming from the law library to reimburse the county for the charge on the credit card to fix the computer.
Any questions from the board? Vice Chairman Robinson?
Those mondo, you talking about something like that?
Yeah.
They call, that's expensive pop, we got to pay to fix something, I mean, how, I mean, there's not awards or something, they should just, why am I paying? I mean, I don't care, I mean, once they're not in fine, I'm just curious as to why would they just fix it? It's not under warranty?
I don't have that information.
I don't have the details either.
All right, so, we just, we pay somebody to just come out and fix it? Listen, just, we pay somebody to come fix something, I guess, can we find out by tomorrow? Do we have those machines under warranty first, and second, how long ago did, where they purchased? Sometimes I always hear it's about, you know, I won't push the Clark Howard, you know, about the different, being buying service agreements and warranties, I mean, but it just, it begs the question like, well, what do you mean? He bought multiple, that's nice pop for somebody, and you're going, and it died, and if it's only been a couple of years, which I think, I know it ain't been over two years, then why am I paying this fee? Can you just answer that? Find that out probably tomorrow? Just not to slow, slow it down, ma'am chair, we got to get it done, but, thank you. Ayo.
I'm going to move to, last but not least, it would be tab sixteen, because it's a simple flop, and it is authorization to approve a supplemental agreement, number five, with Michael Baker International Corporation, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, a million, four dollars and nine cents for additional design services, in connection with the Lee Road Phase Two widening project, P one zero 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 four four two eight, to be funded through the twenty sixteen SPOSS funds, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents, and this was, this actually was tabled from June eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and our director, Valentin, if you could expound further.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This item has been discussed several times, both at the committee level and at the board, and the last issue that we have to make a decision on, to be able to move that process forward, is where the funding is going to be pulled from to fund this additional design effort. As you might recall, in order to take the project off the shelf, as the Georgia DOT refers to, and get it into a program for delivery within a year's time, we have to then go back to the original designer, who is most familiar with the project, to update the plans and the environmental documents. And the last recommendation at the Transportation Committee was that the funding be pulled from the twenty sixteen economic development category SPOSS to fund a project. So, essentially, that is the last remaining hurdle for the board to.
Any questions? Vice Chairman Robinson?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge the fact that this was, had been talked about in Transportation Committee. I think it was taken off the agenda, because one of the things we try to establish is, unless something is exigent, we just never, we don't want to, as opposed to the department administration, things got shotgun. We believe it was important that, no, if a committee comes after a work session, don't roll that right into a decision sometimes. Sometimes it's immaterial, but it's just a courtesy, and so, my agreement to sort of pause on this wasn't that I was not in the room agreeing that this was appropriate, it was just the fact of the process that, like, no, give people time, don't just shotgun them. If it's a timing issue, then we should do a better job of planning upstream, so knowing that that date is going to hit. So, that's to all directors, let's just, don't put us in that place, where we have to sit there and sort of, you know, it's not necessary, it's unnecessary friction that sometimes can have unintentional consequences, but I do support this, I do agree, we did discuss it, it came out of committee that it should come out of economic development. I stand with my District One and District Three Commissioners, who wanted to keep this thing moving, because obviously, we've allocated the five million, and six million, and eleven million, and now, we've got to take, obviously, additional money to, for the design to get this on track, so what we don't want to do, again, had we, if we'd been shovel-ready last time, we probably would have done this for half the cost, so think about it. We, it could have been, what, ten million dollars, now it's twenty-one million, that means we had to pull eleven million dollars out of the current SPOSS, that's eleven million cash, because of a mistake, inefficiency from times past, that we could have been using somewhere else, and so, that's how important it is. I appreciate you keeping this on task, but keep us clean, please. Ayo.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker?
Yes, I was the one that asked for not to be shoved through, but the economic development category falls below. Streets and bridges and intersections and operations, so how do we know we're going to have?
Technically, they're all are together.
Okay, well, it's listed.
It's listed below, but no, they all run parallel there at the same time.
But we took, we took six million out of the Economic Development funds, but we don't know that we're gonna have ten million put in there, do we? I mean, we don't know.
Based on the numbers right now, we do.
We don't know that we're gonna be able to fund all these other projects for, to put ten million in the Economic Development.
Based on the numbers we have right now, there will be ten million in the Economic Development.
So all these other projects above there is gonna be completely terminated.
No, they're not above it, they run parallel with it, there's different categories in transportation.
But I mean, above the line, above the line, they should be funded before ten million is put here, is that true?
No, that's not fair. They run, they run together, so the intersections and sidewalk upgrades, economic development, the resurfacing, they all, they're separate categories within transportation that have their own priority list, and so all four of those categories, you're working down in the category. So the categories only have, each one has a certain amount of money allotted.
Allowed, but it's if the funds are available on all of them.
Yes, that's correct.
So we don't, how do we know we're gonna have ten million in the Economic Development?
Based on the numbers we have right now and the trends, we will have ten million. Now, at this point, after this one seventy-four, we would have a balance of approximately two million in the Economic Development category, which is twenty percent of that category.
But my, my biggest objection is six million was put into the Lee Road from Economic Development, and then what, five million from Annie Wakey, or something like that? But, I mean, but to me, any overage should come out of that money, because it's already been allocated. You've shifted the money around, because every time you take money out of a SPOSS, out of a SPOSS that you don't know is gonna be there, it pushes all the other projects down, and it's jeopardizing projects in your district, my district, and Henry Mitchell's district. It should come out of the economic money that's already been set aside. It should not, it's just like the Interstate West paving, it was not on the SPOSS list to begin with, never was on the list, and you said it was the right thing to do, which you think it is, but I don't think it was the right thing to do. It should have come out of your allocation, just like, unless we all get eighty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to spend in our district, why should, why should something come out of SPOSS that has not been on the SPOSS list to begin with? That's not transparent, that is not transparent. And this should come out of the money that has been set aside for the Lee Road. Remember, Lee Road was not on the list either, it was not on the SPOSS list either.
But it was discussed as part of Economic Development category.
Okay, and we've shifted that money over there, where any overage should come back. Any overage should come out of the money that's already been set aside for Lee Road. And then at the end of the road, if more money's needed, that's when we should address it, but for right now, it's just shoving our, our projects lower, pushing it down, and Lee Road was not originally on the list. And I just feel like sometimes we get a little complacent with, you know, we just pull the money out of SPOSS, pull it out of SPOSS, but every time we do, it jeopardizes projects in the other districts. And that was my main objection. It said on the agenda, it said out of SPOSS funds, it didn't say which SPOSS fund. Didn't say Economic Development Funds or whatever. But since money has already been set aside in the ten of eleven million dollars from Lee Road, I think that's where the money should come from, rather than just continuously hitting the general SPOSS fund. And I yield back.
Okay, Miss Johnson, you're back. Anybody else? Questions from the Robinsons?
Yeah, just real quick, well, I appreciate it. Yeah, we all have different views, and at the end of the day, it's the general, it's the consensus of the board. There's always the leaning, this SPOSS was created and situated in one of the categories. The prior majority knew what it was doing. Part of that is the majority. You framed this SPOSS that went to a referendum. Ten million was allocated for Economic Development with no legal, I want to say legal, meaning it was not in the referendum on how it was to be spent. So when we try to create rules as we go, well, we're all rulemakers. It's like, no, that's not how that went down, that's not how that went down. The ten million dollars that was allocated was really part of my capes very, like, for my vote, I want forty million, and just like yesterday. They gave me ten, they gave me ten. Forty million, think about hindsight, Jennifer, it would, like, we would have killed the whole thing, but they gave ten million for District Two. That was for my vote, but the second time, I voted down Fox Hall, but they needed my cover, second time around. Pay attention. The ten million is in District Two, I had no problem sharing it with my colleagues, spread across that Lee Road, it's all Economic Development, you can get into all that all you want to. It was clear what that was about. So unless staff, they come up, we can take it out of Economic Development, it's like, okay, it's for greater good, it's three districts, it's, we get what it's about, not a problem. But this is not about, like, it's just being cherry-picked. One more time, if the mistake had not been made, we'd have been further along with this. We're not gonna take the hit for prior mishandling, prior, don't let me go there, on that whole Lee Road. We're having to make up for a very, I mean, almost criminal, if I really wanted to push that. We had to take a, we had to take in our, take a hit in our financials, we had to restate. And you complain about one twenty-five to get this back on track, when we asked him to get this fixed? We had to clean up the mess from the prior administration as it relates to this project. DOT leadership in the past was just like, no, we can't sit here and make it seem like all of a sudden we're doing something wrong, or that, it's, like, we're trying to fix something. And we appreciate you, Miguel, we, we get it, again, you know how that got turned sideways and it wasn't what that, you know, but, but still, this has got to move forward, but let's not drain on this as if, okay, we're gonna spend another one twenty-five. Well, all of it is in there, all of it, originally was supposed to be for Thorn Road, Master Plan, twenty-one million. So we've made some decisions, and we get the right to do that, we're not, you can't bind our choices, our decisions, on how we think, we're, unless like Tom used to come, he tried to put it in writing, I'm free. And if the board sits here, and they're saying they changed their mind, and they want to reprioritize based on what they see, because the law does not tell us, and the referendum does not tell us that we can't do this, then until you put some rules, like the state legislature has rules committees, and they have rules that are written that says that we have to do it a certain way, we're making this up as we go. So then it does become just your view versus our view. It's just like, okay, well, I respect it, I do respect you, I do respect what you're saying. But I'm always gonna counter, when there's a narrative that wants, like, counter to what the truth is, and that's not what this was, and this is not how this went down, but the one twenty-five is needed to move this project along, to fix a mess, that we had to take a financial restatement on my financials? I, you talking about, didn't do their job? If I really went, that's, that's what I'm saying, do I really have to go there? And I, I want to be, I'm glad this was last, because if it puts a, like, really? Like, sometimes you gotta look yourself in the mirror, and look at your own behavior as it relates to, like, wow, really? This, and so we're really trying to make this good for the whole, and so Miguel, I'm looking at you, because I do appreciate this, and so let's move this forward, and really, you know, for the greater good. Thank you for the effort, for recalibrating this, bringing this forward from twenty twenty-eight to get it to where it was. I mean, you really had to work some stuff, and so, yeah, it takes another one twenty-five. There's been plenty of projects that have come here where we've had to add a little bit more, add a little bit more. I mean, we can go down the list, add a little bit more, because we, oh, the scope is off, oh, we gotta add a little bit more. As long as you, again, the point was to have it a public conversation, that was my only point. In other words, I would not have taken it off the agenda, had it not, not the fact that you get the point. In other words, the second, I would have picked up my second, but it was a different principle, but you get my point, that just, just be clean and clear, and allow, because it's a lot of money, and it is, transportation does consume a lot, and I think we have to be sensitive, it consumes, it's one of the biggest things, and so I want to be sensitive to that. So I'm good on that, you get, Miguel, we good?
We're good.
All right.
All right, Commissioner Geiger?
The referendum was on percentages, thirty-two percent for firing EMS, fifty-one percent transportation, seventeen percent parks and rec. Nowhere does it say Economic Development was for District Two, which was just stated. It was for the, and only three projects were listed under that, and that was Riverside Parkway, Street Lights, Lee Road Extension Study, and Riverside Parkway Traffic Light. Nowhere did it say Lee Road anything, so this came about after the fact, after everybody had voted and everything. But I'm just saying, it's not just his to spend, SPOSS money is not just his to spend, the Interstate West that was paved, in the minutes that said a hundred and thirty-two thousand, you quoted eighty thousand, which one was it?
Well, initially, we had an estimate that was higher, but the actual expenditure, we knew there was gonna be a possibility for some savings. The actual expenditure to date has been a little less than ninety thousand, eighty-nine thousand or so for the paving, and we have another twelve thousand or so for the striping yet to be done, so it'll be about a hundred and one thousand total.
But where's the money coming from?
Well.
For that, because it was not on any street list, it was not on anybody's street list, right?
Understood, it was, it was not on the final list, but it was on the preliminary list, along with Lee Road. You might recall that the, that the three million allocation for resurfacing, for, to be divided amongst the four districts, there is a half a mil, five hundred thousand or so allocated as a match for the L-ME program, so that leaves twenty-five hundred. If you allocate that four ways, it's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per district. The cost to do the resurfacing on Lee Road came in at about four hundred and fifty-five thousand. So adding another hundred and one thousand for the Interstate West, which was originally on the list, but got taken off because of the estimate, brings it under the six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar allocation per district. So essentially, the expenditure for both of those roads.
So the list that was handed out to us was incorrect?
It was not incorrect in the sense that, that we had an estimate for what we thought it would cost, and Interstate West would not have fit within that estimate. But as the expenditures became clearer, it was, it became more obvious that, yes, we could fit within the overall.
I'm just saying that we need to stick to the procedures as closely as possible, and not just let someone take out funds just for their projects, it needs to follow the guidelines. We have eleven million in the Lee Road project that has been transferred from two different other projects. Anything that pertains to Lee Road should come out of that, and it should not just be a bucket that someone can just pull a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars out of at their, their pleasure. And I yield back.
Okay, questions from Commissioner Geiger?
Don't want to give you credit, just, yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it, Miguel, and again, I had to step where I couldn't hope, but I appreciate the commentary, this is not about, I mean, we've got a committee structure, and you're, you're the lead, and we've got a pretty good structure, it's filmed, which is something that it was important that any decision that wants to be challenged and how the narrative, everything is recorded, so they can follow it, and so I don't want it to be such that any one person took something out, it's a committee, it's public. And sometimes I hear, you know, sometimes people are in office for power, some people in office get stuff done. Things are not linear in government, when you have, like, earlier today, we had a tax incentive request. Companies come from the left or right, and it's not part of the plan. What do you do? You call an audible, you reset priorities. We don't have to stick to this, all right, we could, we have discretion. If we put something in place that says not to exceed, then that's that. But when we have chances, even then, we can make decisions at a board commissioners, it's our discretion. The law doesn't say we don't have to do it that way. We do have public debate. Again, ma'am chair, I appreciate your committee structure, because I think we probably would be in a different place in the old way. This is very structured, very transparent, very open, and you can change your mind, you can do, but I look at, you know, when we talk about the whole Interstate West, no, it wasn't on the list. This man just dropped two hotels that couldn't get done somewhere else, and did a very good job. And so he's like, I need a little help, I'm not asking you to build my roads or anything, I just want you to pay me out front of this. Two hotels. And so sometimes, as a board, we have to say, okay, committee, break it through, can y'all make this work for this person? And it's open, and it's yes or no. But to suggest that, you know, it may feel that way, and I get it, not sometimes I sit back, but when I look at District Four, sometimes I'm like, I don't want to advocate for y'all.
Woo!
No, no. I, I, no.
You wanna get in a mud fight, we'll get in a mud fight.
No, it's not, it's not mud, no, don't, don't get it wrong. I say when I talk about, it's, it's the suggestion, it's not mud, it's unwarranted. And sometimes you, it's like enough, move on versus being a broken record. Advocate to get stuff done versus trying to count what Kelly's doing. It's like, you talk about shade and jade, and it's like, man, do you ever focus on what you need to get done? All I try to do, and this is important, like, guys, come on, we're better than this. I, I don't, I, I try to avoid it, I'm very defensive, not offensive, but it will hit back. And it's, it's, stay focused, it's all for the greater good, we're advocating for. People who come to us, corporate citizen, non-residential, everybody's advocating, we're sitting here just trying to do a good job. That's what I'm saying, all this is like, it's amateur, it's like, man, come on, grow up, what is this? Nobody's trying to do anything wrong. Come up with narrative that you've got limited resources, you've got ten dollars worth of need, get in there, find your allies. When you're in isolation and you don't know how to work the system, you, you, that's why I sit here like, well, I get enough support, whether it was Republican or Democrat. I moved through this matrix in such a way that, and you're sitting here like, well, you got the same power, but it's all about over here, and it's like, come on, do you, I do me, everybody's one vote, but make the county better. And that's why sometimes you hear me pushed back, it's like, come on, man, it's amateur. I think our narrative locally, it's like, it's, it's rural narrative, it's like, it needs to advance. Fight for your citizens, advocate for the needs of the community. Come in this room, be prepared, pay attention, figure out what you need to do, versus always, it's like, stop that, because why you still doing it? I'm still moving, let's do better than that. I just asked that, and I'm sure we, and you've done a good job, you really tried to keep it, but it's like, no, but you can't, you can't cut, slap, shoot, no, think that the Second Amendment, you always hear me, that doesn't apply. And some of the innuendo and the suggestion, and implied commentary is like, man, come on, go now, do better. Focus on what needs to get done, if there's a true procedural issue, that's cool, but when you start something up, like, some people, it's like that type, like, you think I didn't hear that? That's all I got is to hear. You're like, you pull me aside and grab me, I say, why are you touching me? On this stage, like, you're a salt, don't ever grab me. Like, don't stop, like, I didn't mention, like, don't, don't ever touch me, though. Don't ever grab me, especially because I can't see you, send a woman, like, don't touch me. But I'm saying, stop, please. But I'm saying, stop, please, let's move this county forward, let's do right, and we move forward. Ayo.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Director Valentin, and I'm, I want to see this project go forward, and at least, and certainly can move it to a business item, let's move it to a business item for tomorrow. And we have several things that have been changed, such as the Whitestone Hubert, and also the Lee Road, so those are things that, you know, as the leader of this county, I've had to shift, because I've heard the cry of my individual district commissioners regarding the areas, how long these projects have been on board, and we found a way to get them done. So I appreciate your statement that some people run for power, and others run to get things done, and I'm a get-it-done woman, and I just wanna make sure we get these things done. So with that being said, I hope, if you have anything else on the Board of Commissioners, and if not, I will call for executive session, and attorney, do we have, we need to go into?
The operating, Madam Chair, legal, real estate, and personnel, let it be real quick, I think.
Okay, what of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Settle second.
All in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Take ten minutes, and I'll see y'all back in here. All right, thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, do we have any other comments or questions regarding this meeting? I would like to just add, it was a very productive meeting today, and I appreciate your time and talent that you shared with us over two weeks. All right, if there's nothing else to come before this Board of Commissioners, this meeting is adjourned.